Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's study session of the City of Casa Grande. Tonight, we have our general plan update from the Planning Department. Mr. Tice?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. To my right is Leslie Dorn, who's the chief consultant from PlanNet on our general plan project. So Leslie's going to go ahead and walk you through some milestones in the plan, where we are, what we've done, and then we're going to talk about a little bit of what we still need to accomplish. Leslie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's Councilwoman Powell, both members of the General Plan Steering Forum. I also just want to acknowledge a couple of members from the Technical Advisory Committee and the Steering Forum that are in the audience tonight. If I can just raise your hand. So it's really nice to see that the community's engaged as well as the council. And just as a consultant, I really, really appreciate that. Your city manager is, who's at all the technical advisory committee meetings? Okay, here we go. So just tonight, we're going to quickly go through what the purpose of this update is and why we're doing it, a little bit about how we've engaged the community, talk a little bit about what our general plan scenarios are and how we modeled them. Part of our approach to this plan is to make it as fact-based as possible, and then some of our next steps, and Paul will be talking about that. The purpose of the update, sorry about that. Overall, the general plan is by law required to be updated every 10 years. So in keeping with state law, you could either adopt your old general plan or you could create a new one. The trick with adopting your old general plan is a lot of your numbers might be out of date, some of your policies might be out of date, a lot has changed in your community. You can see some of those changes that are identified in the black box on the slide. And so you want to make sure that you're as current as possible as you go forward into the next decade. So that's really what we're trying to do. And some of the key items in this update is really acknowledging and celebrating the downtown and putting together a land use category that encourages infill and its redevelopment, understanding the impact that some of the new employment's going to have on your community, and adjusting housing and our land use categories to deal with that, and also adjusting for new land use types. Many years ago, someone once said to me, about 20 years ago, someone once said to me, 10 years before then, would you have imagined Starbucks? And now they're ubiquitous. So just land use types have really changed over time, and we want to be able to accommodate them. So those are some of the purposes for the update. I wanted to talk a little bit about how we're connecting with the community and how we're doing outreach. We've got a pretty robust community outreach program. We're doing it in partnership with the Planning Department, and they've really been great. They actually set up a community outreach table at our kickoff to let people know about the plan and what was coming. We've got online outreach in a survey format through our general plan website, which I'll talk about in a minute. We've had seven meetings of the General Plan Steering Forum, and that's about 20, 20, 25 people that represent every aspect of the community, from the development community to housing and the arts, citizens, education. And they attend every month. The mayor chairs that committee. The vice chair is Jackie, she's sitting right here. And they go through the general plan with us step by step and give us feedback. We had a youth commission meeting. No, I'm sorry, we have not had a youth commission meeting. We have two youth commission meetings scheduled. We had our general plan land use workshop where we had about 100 people in attendance, and I'll talk about that in a minute. We're having one of the two city council working meetings now. We also had a presentation to the Planning and Zoning Commission in a working session. We'll be doing another one of those. And we've also have our online outreach through our website and our general plan update webpage. So we've been doing a lot to make sure the community's aware of this project and that they have every opportunity to become involved with it. We have community comment opportunities at the Steering Forum. Both the Steering Forum and Technical Advisory Committee agendas are online before the meeting. So if anybody wanted to attend or call Paul and ask questions, all of that's available to them. This is our, excuse me, general plan website. You can get to it just by typing cggeneralplan2030.com, and it'll get you right there. It's a great little website. I'm not going to go through it now, but there are literally maps that you can, we call dropping a pin, but, you know, click and point and then make a comment about land uses or what you'd like to see. You can access planning documents. You can look at the, all of the presentations that were made at prior meetings, see the agenda for upcoming meetings. Any kind of documentation is on that website. We've also got documentation about existing conditions and what the community conditions are today, so people understand some of the topics that we'll be dealing with as we move forward through the update. One of the, I would say, seminal community events that we've had so far through the update is the community workshop. It was really a resounding success. We probably had over 100 residents come and participate in the workshop, give us their ideas on the general plan, on some new land use categories, on how the land use, different types of land use scenarios that could be developed, different approaches to developing in the future. We had presentations on the economy, on our current conditions. It was really, for me, it was just really an informative time. And what was so nice is that we had 100 people at the beginning and probably more, or more, and we had probably more than that at the end. So everyone really stayed through it. It was really super. These are some of the comments, and I'm not going to go through them, but what we did is we sorted the comments that we got from the workshop into four general areas, and then your, the color codes refer to the general plan update elements that those comments likely pertain to. But again, it was a really robust meeting, and what the point of our summarizing these comments is, is these kinds of things inform our policy updates in the general plan. So it's not a bunch of consultants sitting in a back room saying, wow, they should be doing this. It's more like we look at the comments and say, hey, the community wants this. How are we going to make that happen, either through updating goals or changing policies and strategies? So we really try to keep the update connected to the plan. Those are another, those are just continuing comments. And I think one of the things I want to point out is if there's an area you're particularly interested in, you're thinking, I wonder why there are not a lot of comments on that. It might have been, it just wasn't, we were very focused on land use at the general plan workshop, so, for example, you might see a few comments on solar. That was, for example, in relation to one of the changes we're making to the rural land use category, is to allow utility-grade solar in that category. So it just got people thinking about that, but we may not have really talked a lot about public art on major roadways, so it just didn't trigger that thought in a lot of people. Doesn't mean those things aren't important, it just means it wasn't a topic of focus at the land use workshop. So now I just really want to kind of get to where we're at with our land use scenarios and our modeling outputs. And our entire approach to this plan is to try to give people as much information about how Casa Grande grows and the impact of that growth on your community in the future. And so what we did is, we looked at, and what this slide really describes is, we looked at what you've got now, and the reason you see those two pictures, the yellow map and then the map with all the colors, the yellow map is your existing general plan neighborhood's land use category. And if you remember, that neighborhood's category is a pretty diverse category, and it was really meant to describe a place. So in neighborhoods, you could have some multifamily, you could have some commercial, but the predominant land use type was intended to be single-family residential. You could have some low density, but that's really the predominant type. But when you really look at that land use category and see how it's developed, you'll see all these different colors, and those colors are from the assessor's map. There's a lot of different land use in that neighborhood's category. So that informed us as we did modeling and said, you know, how do we project out what the impacts of any land use category are? We did this for each of the land use topologies, each of the land use categories in your general plan. The one thing I want to mention, and that influenced our modeling quite a bit, is that about two-thirds of your city is vacant. And so as we modeled these land uses and we filled them up, we weren't necessarily changing anything, we were really adding development to what's vacant land and is anticipated to be redeveloped. So you're not seeing massive changes. It's not like we're taking an area of, you know, old, and I don't mean historic, but let's say, you know, an area of obsoletely developed land and turning it into a super-new multi-use development, because we had vacant land that we could do that on, and it's cheaper to typically develop on vacant land. So that's basically one of the things, is you've got a lot of room for growth in your So the methodology first was to figure out what we had on the ground, and then the second was to look at our options. So we came up with basically three scenarios, and these scenarios were developed with a lot of input from the community. We had, I think, three meetings where we talked about land use with the Steering Forum. The first meeting, we developed these two, the blue and the green scenario. One we're calling urban rural, and the other one we're calling urban suburban. And the reason we use those names is the urban suburban was to look at infill, emphasize the downtown, but really keep the suburban style of development that exists now, so it includes a lot of development along the interstate highways. The, that's the urban suburban. The blue one, the urban rural, was sort of, you're either in the city or you're not. So we pushed as hard as possible, that's the blue one, to say in the future, you're either going to be in an infill area, an urban area, a higher intensity area, or to the greatest extent possible, again, without eliminating existing development, you're going to be low density. And we tried to push these true scenarios so we could see drastic differences between them. Again, because there's a lot of vacant land, those scenarios weren't that drastically different. So here are the three scenarios, your existing general plan, which we're calling the base case or business as usual, the rural-urban, and again, I think this, is the green thing the highlight? Is the green thing? No?
No, you can't.
Okay, so there's no pointer. So if you look at the urban-rural scenario, one of the things that I think is most noticeable is that everything southwest of the tracks, more or less, is rural. And when we modeled that, we modeled that as rural, no development. A lot of development to the east that in our existing general plan we have as suburban or neighborhoods, we backed back into rural. We really kept the core of Casa Grande, the main development area to the greatest extent possible. You'll also notice that along the freeways, we really just focused development south of McCartney Road and around the northern edge of Pennell and the 10, and that was, again, in response to community comments, people wanted gateways. The suburban-urban one, you'll notice, and both of these, I'm sorry, I meant to point out one more thing, you'll notice in the rural-urban that we have a very big kind of square downtown, and you'll notice that we took the Florence Boulevard quarter and kind of widened it, the idea of promoting infill in there to increase intensity, and we also pushed intensity to the greatest extent possible along Pennell Avenue. In the suburban-urban one, you'll notice that the Florence Boulevard quarter is much narrower, but we pushed more intensity and density along Trekal Road, along Cottonwood between Pennell and Trekal, and then up and down Pennell Avenue. And you'll also notice we pushed a lot more of the business development, we spread that out along both the 8 and the 10. You'll notice there's a funny kind of cross-hatched wormy line that goes through both maps. Both of those lines are the ADOT Preferred I-11 alignment. We also recognize you're working with ADOT now to adjust that alignment. We put it on at the request of the community, but it'll probably come off again because we know that it's in flux. So that's really the differences. And then you'll also notice on the suburban-urban one that we extended suburban development throughout the city boundaries. So we included, it's kind of that flag to the southwest that hangs down, and that's an entitled master plan community. Also along the northern and to the east edges of the community, you'll see there is more suburban-type development as well. So this one really expands the area of growth beyond what I would call the core of Casa Grande. So when you look at these three models, how do you evaluate them? So we looked at basically five outputs. Why did we choose these outputs? One, we talked with the Steering Forum and the Technical Advisory Committee about them. These were the things that people were most interested in, but it was also what we could find data for. So a lot of people say, you know, well, why didn't you evaluate the cost of infrastructure? It would have been very difficult at this point for us to look at what it would cost to extend water, sewer, electric. We just don't have those numbers in real time, and Casa Grande's a little unique. So what we did was we used numbers to the greatest extent possible that really reflect Casa Grande. So for example, our water numbers are based on working with the Arizona Water Company, and they are pretty darn close to what they project. Our electricity usage numbers, we worked with APS, we, to the greatest extent possible, got our costs to match. Transportation, we did as much work as we could. It's very hard, we used regional numbers, it's very hard to get localized numbers. Some quarter MPO doesn't have it, neither does MAD. Walk score is something we could do fairly easily, and when we compile the costs of those different things, that comes up to household cost. We care about household costs because you care about the cost of living in your community. We don't want to create a land use pattern that makes it so expensive to live here that people go to other places. So we want to keep that in mind as well. So here are some of the modeling results, and I'm not going to go into detail with all of them, but what I want to point out is that in most cases, the either land use scenario performs better than what we've got in the existing general plan, and I was part of developing that plan, so I'm happy to take the hit on that, but we're doing better with these new updated scenarios, and that the suburban-urban scenario typically will perform better than the rural-urban scenario. And part of that is because of transportation, and part of that is because of water. So here's the 2030 increments, and 2030, 2020 to 2030 is only 10 years. 10 years is fast, it's not a big increment. So when we look at the next increment, which would be 2050, you'll begin to see a little bit bigger changes. So for example, in suburban-urban, you'll see larger differences in water consumption than the existing general plan, which moves to the middle bar. And again, we're sorry that the order didn't stay the same, it was how our model kicked it out, so we tried to label them. And in this one, BAU is business as usual, is the existing general plan. So that, again, is the middle line, and you'll see overall, our alternatives are performing In terms of energy use, again, the suburban-urban model typically performs better than the existing general plan and the rural-urban, and that's per household energy use. We looked at, you know, annual, which is kind of a total of the per households and commercial, and so we kind of just built up those costs. And then in 2050, you begin to see even more differences. And again, that's just because we're looking at 20 years as opposed to 10 years of growth, so you're beginning to see more, and also you've got the 10 years behind it that were already on the ground. So you're really beginning to see pretty large differences. In transportation, your existing general plan does not perform that well, but it doesn't perform that badly when it comes to suburban-urban and the rural-urban scenario. When we look at VMT, when we look at Mochair, all the models are pretty much the same because there aren't really a lot of alternative transportation modes in Casa Grande right now. When we look at 2050, we begin to see that the rural-urban one begins to perform better. Again, that's because you see more in place, and there's more intensity in concentrated locations in that rural-urban scenario. So here's where you're, again, you're beginning to see the impacts of some of the changes of land use. When we look at walk accessibility, there's not huge differences between them. You'll find that, again, on this one, the longer bars are better, they're higher, but the suburban-urban tends to perform better, and that looks at resources that are within a quarter-mile to half-mile walk of different things like hospitals and schools. And then when you move to 2050 for that model, what you typically find is that the suburban- urban performs pretty well, and again, it's because there are concentrated centers in there. So when you add all this up and you look at annual kind of household cost, your total household cost, the model that seems to be, the two models that seem to be more efficient than what we have are the suburban-urban and the rural-urban. And when you look at 2050, you, again, begin to see the benefits of more compact development that comes out of the rural-urban scenario, but typically, typically that performs better. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Paul to do next steps.
Great, thanks, Leslie. So the, the next major step that we're going to start working on with our next Steering Forum meeting is to take those two growth scenarios, the suburban-urban and rural-urban, and combine them into one preferred growth scenario. We took some straw votes at some meetings, and it looks like, in general, there's a preference for the suburban-urban model, with some, you know, tweaking regarding the community corridor boundaries and the downtown boundaries, but, you know, everyone has really been pretty engaged in giving, in their thoughts and their comments. So we need to work over the next two meetings, I think, to develop the preferred growth scenario, which we can really start developing our final strategies and goals and policies around, as well as start getting some additional broader public comments into, into that, those scenarios. So though we've had, we've had seven meetings with the Technical Advisory Commission and the Steering Forum, and they've been very productive meetings. Everyone's been very engaged, and, and they've been well-attended, but we have some more work to do. We're about halfway through those meetings, and we think we have about six or seven more to go. We have to start really focusing on writing the modules or elements of the plan regarding these topics you see on the screen. Last meeting, I think we shared with the group our current housing policies and strategies and, strategies and goals, and talked about what we really need to, how we need to revise them. Surprisingly, a lot of the stuff in our current plan in terms of strategies, goals, and policies is still pretty good. Needs some tweaking, but, but we're not going to throw out everything, we're just going to kind of refine it. The Community Services Department has just finished redrafting the parks, trails, and open space elements, so we're going to roll that out to the Steering Forum and talk to them about it at our next meeting. Economic Development Staff just finished rewriting the economic development chapter for us, and we're going to be reviewing that. Transportation, we're going to talk about redevelopment areas, because that's part of the statutory requirement for us to at least identify the areas of the city that need to be, should be redeveloped, and how we should look at that. Transportation and mobility, we're actually talking about that at our next Steering Forum meeting as well, where we're talking about the city transportation network, the major street network, as well as the regional network that we're connecting into, to talk about those and how those fit in to the growth model. An interesting aspect of how we're approaching transportation is, a lot of times, we're trying to make sure that the transportation network that's being proposed is really the network that's needed to support the transportation needs of the preferred growth model, the preferred growth scenario, and not necessarily a full build-out scenario for the city, because, but really that 2050 growth horizon, with the idea that whatever that network looks like, it could be expandable as that, as we kind of achieve those growth scenarios, but we're really tying the, the transportation network to make sure it supports and is well-aligned with the growth scenario. Of course, we're doing the same thing with water resources. Water resources are really informing this plan in terms of where growth will occur. One thing that Leslie did not share with you that we've developed is a map, regardless of the two growth scenarios, but a map of where the water resources really are today in Casa Grande, the approved certificates of assured water supply for the 24,000 lots that really will support a population of 130,000-ish people. But we know where that is, and so we're going to be overlaying that, as well as talking about how we might develop additional water resources, from conservation policies and strategies to just additional water resources that might be able to be developed and brought to the table to support growth. But we're going to, Arizona Water is working as a lead on the water resources plan in a collaborative effort with the city, but we're going to take elements of that water resource plan and work them into our general plan, so there's really good alignment between those, and they inform each other. We have to, of course, continue the public engagement process. We've had good results so far, but we need to continue that effort, and we need to publish a final draft under state law for 60-day public agency review. So there's kind of a, a pens-down period, where we finish everything, pens-down, send out the draft to all these statutory-required agencies, including the Planning Commission and City Council, for just public comments. We'll probably be back here for a We'll probably be back here for a review of that final draft with you to get comments. That's probably the appropriate time to come back one more time for a study session, because things will be vetted out a little bit more with you and Planning Commission. But because of this process that we're going through, we are a little bit behind schedule. For us to meet the original schedule that I had targeted, which was a November 3 public vote, our public draft for the 60-day period would have been done by the end of January. So the, the, the schedule that I was targeting was just too aggressive to allow for really a functional public engagement process, right? Because it takes a little bit more time to get the public engaged, get the input, and really to listen to it and incorporate it. So we're behind schedule on that. I've put together a new target date and finish date that gets us to a public vote in May, and the reason it takes us to May to get there, even though the Planning Commission would be held their public hearings this year in November and December, and we'd be back before council for a final approval of council in December, the state law requires 120 days from the council decision to the public vote. So we have four months of, of time, and we're not working on the plan, it's all done. What we're going to use for that time is to go out again and do a lot of public education, public engagement, presentations to foreign people of why they should vote for the new general plan. So with that, we would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
So Paul, the reason that it's not in time for the general election in November is because it needs to be out there for 120 days? I thought it was only 60 days.
Actually, it's, it's, it's both, Mayor. It has to be, there's a 60-day period where nothing can happen on the plan, because it's got a final draft or review, so you can't do anything on it. And then after that 60-day period is done, that's when Planning Commission can start their public hearing process by law. So then Planning Commission would hold two public hearings, and then council would have a hearing to adopt it, and then 120 extra days after council decision for the public vote. So all told, there's 180 days of time when no work can happen on the plan essentially, under state law.
Wonder we don't get anything done.
I, I know. But it is what it is, you know, this basically six month of time.
I wasn't aware of the 120 days, so.
Yes. I wasn't actually either initially, until the city attorney reminded me.
Reminded you?
Yeah.
So Paul, what's the difference on the cost? Because I saw on the agenda, we have the, we're voting on the election, and that includes the general plan, right? So is, so we're going to have to put out another notice, an election, and is it the same cost?
No.
Okay.
It won't be the same cost. It'll be more.
Oh.
I don't, I don't know how much it will be to hold a special election. The city clerk might be able to give us some indication of that.
When we have a consolidated election, we share the cost, right? When we hold a special election, unless there is a school district or a county issue, it will be the city bearing the entire cost, because it's a special election for the city.
That's why we tried to do it with the general, right? Wasn't that the original plan?
That was one of the reasons for the, for the, for the November, as well as thinking that we might hit a higher turnout for participation.
And correct me if I'm out of, is the idea is that maybe this would be the opportunity to do by mail, and Stark, and I know we've discussed it through the years of doing different ones when we've had different, where it's just a single issue and doing mail ballot, and so, I don't know.
That may be, that might be an opportunity to use a mail ballot. We'll, I'll have to contact the county elections office and see if that would be available to us.
Paul, just for public interest, have any of the residential divisions, low density, high density, medium density, have any of those changed from what they were prior to this? Are we changing any going into it? Is the PAD still the same as it has been?
So, is this clicker? I, I, the answer is they have changed. Call Smith, Paul. Now, we, what we didn't include in this plan for this presentation was a description of each of these land use categories, the neighborhoods category, and so I'm going to tell you a couple of things that, that did change. I was trying to get to a map that, whoops, must have passed it.
Go back.
I got it, yeah. Okay. So I'm just going to use this for an example. This is our current general plan, and of course, with each of these categories, like the yellow, which is neighborhoods, there's some information regarding land use types and density that's allowed, right? So, for example, I'm going to tell you that today, in the neighborhoods, you can have multifamily on sites that are, just so I can do this from memory, that are 25 acres or less with up to 18 DUs per acre, okay? So you can have multifamily on standalone sites, 25 acres or less, 18 DUs per acre. That's carried forward in the new plan. One, one thing we've introduced, though, into the new plan, it's also in that neighborhoods category, you could have medium-density developments that were at a lower density, like maybe, I think I'm going to say from six to 14 DUs per acre, maybe, six to 12, with the same concept of a single site of 25 acres or less. So it would be small developments of medium density would be allowed, as well as the high-density in the neighborhoods area. The predominant land use is still single-family, just like it is today. So, but we did introduce medium-density into the neighborhoods to allow some things like, oh, there might be, there might be townhomes at lower density, there might be the single-family home rental product that we've seen, we've been briefed on, might be manufactured home parks. All of those would be allowed in the yellow on a limited basis like high-density is today. So there is a change there. In the downtown area, we have changed the downtown core to allow resident, multifamily, higher-density residential there. So we've introduced higher-density residential in the downtown core. In the blue areas, commerce and business, we've, today, even though multifamily is allowed, it's not allowed to be in a, in a PAD zone, for whatever reason, it's kind of illogical. So we've eliminated that to allow that the blue, the commerce and business, could have some multifamily and medium-density residential along with commerce and business to allow some more mixing of land uses. The same thing in the community corridor, that, that sort of salmon color, and I'm now going to go to this plan. So if you think about the salmon color areas in Florence and Pennell, and, and on sort of Trekkell and Cottonwood, again, in addition to commercial and services, some multifamily is allowed in the commercial corridor area. So we did tweak, I'm going to say, those, those land use categories, as well as introduced a new downtown core land use category that we don't have today.
And that mixed use, too.
The large mix use we still, we do have today, but we've continued it. We really haven't modified that, because it already has been recently revised, and it really didn't need much change.
Will the PAD still be a PAD as it is today?
It will. It will. There's no changing to the, this is not a changing to our zoning regulations, so there's no change to our PAD zoning or our PAD residential design guidelines.
Anyone else, questions? Thank you for the update. Leslie, thank you for coming down and.
Thank you.
Well, Paul, I did want to make a comment, and just, just thanking that committee, a couple of the members are here. I know this is a big time commitment, and it's so important to the city, so I really appreciate the committee members taking the time, and, you know, I think all of us were at that meeting you had the other day, and it was such a great turnout and so much participation. People were so excited and very supportive of the plans that you did present, so I really appreciate you, you know, getting them involved, and I just think it seems like everyone was on board, so.
Yep, yep, I agree, totally agree.
You welcome the public at every meeting you have, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a public, it's a public meeting.
In fact, you'd like to have more of the public there, I think.
That'd be fine. Always want to hear from them, yes. And I want to also just promo a little bit the website, because if you go to the website, CG General Plan 2030, there's a place where you can look at this map, or this map, and you can just make a, put a point on that map and make comments about what you might like about it, what you don't like about it, what, what, what your other thoughts are. So I want to encourage the public to use that website to get comments, because it's been up for, hmm.
Two months.
Yeah, maybe a, maybe a month with the public comment part, but we're not getting that much, that many public comments. We're getting some now, but I'd like to encourage the public to do that.
And you can also read what other people have written, so it's nice to see what.
What is that website?
CG General Plan 2030. It's G, General Plan 2030.
Is it dot or not?
Dot com.
Dot com.
And there's also the Casa Grande 2030.
Right.
That's linked from our website, too.
Yeah, it's right on the front of our website, too. You just click off our city website to get right to it, yes.
One more thing. So you talked about those areas that you're focusing on, on, you know, water resources and redevelopment, parks, trails. So it looks like you're taking current studies and current plans and incorporating it, and so are you doing that also with the transportation, bringing in that study that we did and the possible funding that's available, and bringing that into your general plan also?
Yes, in fact, at the, at the upcoming Steering Forum meeting, we're going to be talking about just, one of our big topics is transportation. So our city traffic engineer is going to be there, he's going to bring in his transportation consultant, Wilson and Company, and they're going to talk about the changes they see made, being made to our major thoroughfare plan, essentially. And then the representatives from the Suncor or MPO are going to come, and they're going to talk about their regional transportation plan and the Regional Transportation Authority, those projects that are on that list for construction, and how those transportation construction projects are, how they fit with our growth areas, because obviously, where you build it, they will come, right? So we need to know where we're building stuff to see what land use we have planned around there. So yes, we are tying all that together.
Well, Paul, just a side note to that, too, we're also in water conservation into the plan.
Right, okay, good. Well, I can see how it's taken a little longer, there's so many pieces to this, and to me, I'd rather do it right, and, you know, and engage the community, rather than, you know, making a couple of changes and submitting it, so, you know, that's more important to me, to make sure we're incorporating all this work that we've done over the years, so.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Okay, well, we've got about 20 minutes for the City Council, so we'll stand adjourned until 7 o'clock.
All right.